Okay, we're ready? All righty, it is six o'clock and I'll open this meeting of the Mount Vernon City Council. We do have a quorum present. Craig is gonna lead us on our invocation.
Please bow with me for prayer. Father God, we just thank you for your grace and your wisdom and just ask you to grant us wisdom as we make decisions that impact the lives of those who live in this community and the future of this community. Father, we just thank you that you love us and that we have confidence in your guidance. And I just pray that you would bless this time and this meeting now in your son's name. Amen.
Amen. Please join for our pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before we get going here, we have a little bit of special information to share. It's a very special day. Big day. It's a big number day. Big number. But today is Councilman Kason's birthday. And at this moment, we would like to say happy birthday.
There's your scepter. Your highness.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Harold. Happy birthday to you.
You're about as red as that crown.
Wait, we got, we have some camera footage from out on the square.
I dismiss.
Hey, they said there'd be no, they said there'd be no King's Day.
I think we got all, all gone.
I had such good eyes, I didn't realize what that was.
So actually Kathy, can we do this right now? We're gonna take a little break. We got cake and ice cream in the side room for everybody.
Hey Harold.
And if you're here visiting, lucky you.
A little Lucky Charon made the announcement about seven forty-five this morning. I don't know who on earth would've thought of something like this.
I, yeah, I've been, I've been locked.
But I think you should wear that crown.
No, I don't.
Yes, I do.
It messes up my eye.
Oh, but it's all right with a crown.
No. I'm trained to. I don't wanna look that way, I'm trained.
That's a pretty dress.
Oh, I can't. I try to be.
You look nice.
Let's go.
Go get some cake.
I'm running ahead. Please, you're all right.
We're right on.
Sure, sure. I see you around, not much, so I don't bother you. You're always running three hundred miles an hour. Sure, I'm just moving around. Concerned citizen.
Pleasure, pleasure.
Come on, Kathy. I'm not eating.
I'm not eating.
Come on, you're welcome.
Yeah, that's all right.
Are you sure?
Yeah. I appreciate it, thank you.
Hey, come on in. You have to help us.
What kind of birthday don't talk about honey fish?
Sir?
What kind of birthday don't talk about honey fish? I've heard one honey fish, I thought.
Apparently his.
We're gonna raise a motion that you wear that crown for the rest of the week.
You do it, but I'm gonna dismiss this place.
Kathy, tell me when we're ready.
I'm ready. We're on the consent agenda.
All right, we will reconvene this meeting at six fifteen. Due to motion to approve the consent agenda, if the council's had the time to review, I'm not gonna read all that.
Make a motion.
Motion from Mark.
I'll second.
Second from Mary, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Report on items of community interest. Do we have anything that anybody'd like to share tonight?
Other than Harold's birthday, I can't think of anything.
That was it.
That was it.
You did kinda turn over a new leaf on your birthday.
No, no.
No.
About time.
Kathy, can you scroll it up a little bit? There you go. All right, we don't have anybody signed up for citizen participation tonight. And our public hearing, it is six sixteen and I'll open our public hearing. The purpose of this hearing is to hear evidence for or against the city of Mount Vernon's intent to establishment of a line of credit with the Alliance Bank not to exceed seven hundred fifty thousand dollars and secured by the city's CDs and to be used for capital and prove its authorizations by the city council and authorize the city administrator to execute all necessary documents. This is recognizing we got a lot of money in CDs and instead of just cashing them in, interest rate's real cheap too, but anyway, we don't have a. That's all right. That's all we have too, so I'll, I'll close it, right? So six seventeen, I'll close the public hearing. Okay, so we can go, we'll do that at item three though, right? So item two, we'll consider an act upon approval of the interlocal tax agreement with Franklin County for tax collection. This is.
This is just the standard thing we were.
So we need a motion to approve the interlocal agreement. Motion from Mark, second from Harold, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, so here's where we've decided to set up a letter of credit with the bank that's, our rate is real cheap.
Yes, sir.
Two percent, something like that.
It's, it's at two percent. Jeff told me that you could give it to us two percent for at least the first year. We have about nine hundred thousand, based on our first quarter, we actually have more than that in our CDs, nine hundred and four thousand dollars to secure it at that rate. We also have a debt fund balance of seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars, which actually exceeds what we were asking for in the line of credit. By establishing and moving these obligations into a line of credit, we can actually consider them to be debt and therefore use our debt service money to pay for them, which we haven't been able to use before. And we've been tapping into the general fund and the utility fund to just pay them as we go. These are all projects that the council approved last year, we're just trying to get them done. Biggest one here is probably the water meters and the raw water intake pump. The water meters, as y'all are aware by now, we were told they were gonna come in, that project was gonna come in around four ninety, five hundred thousand dollars, but the actual cost was seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand because they ended up binding another hundred and. Yeah, a hundred or so meters beyond that. And there were also the more additional costs related to the software, so that's really kinda, that tapped into the general fund quite a bit this year on that. So once the line of credit is established, we'll get with the bank, we'll look at these internally and see which is the best course of action on what to pay when. So we, I've been told by Jeff that he could probably have the line of credit set up for us within forty-eight hours upon council approval.
Good to have a cheap rate too, our CDs get to stay in place and it's kind of a wash. So gives a lot of flexibility to keep things moving forward, not having to tap the brakes.
Absolutely.
Well, we need, we would need a motion from the council to approve that for.
I'll make a motion.
Some motion from Harold.
Second.
Second from Mark. All in favor?
Aye, but can, can we discuss it or?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Well, I would just, my, my first question is, okay, I have two, two notes here for the four forty-seven and the eighty for that, from government capital.
Right.
So did we just pay the difference out of the general fund for the, what we didn't borrow?
Because we can't take it.
Right, yeah. I just wanted to make sure that the notes I had were correct.
It was on plan.
So, so when we draw down on the line of credit, then we could, we could pay on the higher interest on.
We could pay that, that off faster. Yes.
As we draw on the line of credit, we could pay on the higher interest rate on the water meters.
That's, that is one of the things that we probably really consider doing because it's five and a half percent versus two percent on the line of credit. So to just make a lot of.
But the two percent's only good for a year, so you don't really wanna use it all.
No, that's right.
Up in case it goes up, but if we, we pay down as we draw on it, on the, on the meters.
Smart, you said it.
That makes the most sense to me. Now, we have outstanding, we have, the other big one is the, that we have outstanding is the raw water intake pumps. We have a hundred and sixty-seven still remaining on that. And that's gonna have to be paid for probably within the next thirty, sixty days. So we'll, we'll.
We have an invoice right now for a hundred twenty-four thousand.
So we're gonna have to use that definitely for that. The others, the, we just want the flexibility to be able to pay them if we can't afford to do it out of the utility fund or the general fund. You know, we're gonna try to use cash that we have before we borrow, obviously.
Anything else?
No, that's it.
All right. Let's do have a vote, we had a motion and a second here. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So we're discussing items now.
These are, council, you have a list of the capital requests for all of the departments. And what I would, instead of going through these in detail, what I'm going to suggest is that y'all look at these, see if you have any questions on any of these requests and then let me know and we'll schedule a workshop and have the department directors come in. But I can tell you all these requests from my review and I think internally our review, they're much less than they were last year and they're, they're all needed. They're all very reasonable requests. Probably, I guess, the biggest ones came out of the fire department and maybe the animal shelter.
Everything from the animal shelter will be split three ways.
Three ways. And hopefully the fire department will also have some split on that too. So in case y'all had any questions that you wanted to ask right now, I'll be happy to try to field them or you can look at it and then just get back with, you can get back with me and we'll get whoever's, needs to be here, here.
Well, we do that at the next meeting, when the department heads come next, next meeting.
Yeah, they can come next meeting.
Some of these were like, build something, like the fence. Did they get more than one quote on those and that was the, the best quote or did they get one quote?
They got one quote just as a budget figure and then before we, if it's, you know, before we go out, we'll get bids on it.
So if we approve sixty thousand for the fence and it comes in at forty-five?
We're only gonna spend forty-five.
The problem is we've been getting bids, we go off that and then it ends up costing us twice that amount because the bid was only good till we got started, that's one of the kind of things.
So we're padding them a little bit more.
The little job that they would wanna do was gonna cost wastewater, it was gonna cost fifty thousand, but then when they started doing this, then that happened and they had to fix that, and when that happened, then they had to fix something else and it just kinda spiraled.
And that bid on that fence is to completely enclose the maintenance department, to completely secure it. Right now, anybody can walk into it at any time and take whatever they wanna take, so.
Well, we did a lot here in, in this current fiscal year and the request should be lighter this year. We took a big step this last year. Lot got done.
Yeah.
But will be, the needs are definitely much more modest, let's go around, the fire department, we poured the slab over there, which I think y'all have seen that.
And like animal control is really just a generator in case power goes out. And then they wanna fence the back area for fifteen, fourteen dollars and shit and then we give out if we can get one.
So.
And then the recirculation, we have to have twenty-nine recirculation per hour or something and I don't know. I wanna make somebody mad, I'm sure. But this is exactly what we were talking about when we took this thing on and that's five thousand, twenty-eight thousand. Are they just asking for fifty-two hundred dollars is all they're asking for?
You're talking animal control?
Yeah.
All three of those bids would be split three ways.
So, so Paul's and the city don't have to approve our, I mean, if we wanted to spend a hundred thousand dollars, they just have to pay us a third?
We have to manage it. We have to manage it. And everything that they're asking for there is stuff that is absolutely necessary. Emergency generator, if the power goes out, if you don't have it, you're gonna have a bunch of dead animals. Also on the ventilation, there's some health issues that are associated with not having.
What did we do before?
We didn't have this many animals.
And we didn't, okay, so the animal shelter here, you can send it.
And we had a window air conditioner.
And we had a window air conditioner.
And it probably was never, if it was, had ever been inspected by.
It probably, well, I know it wasn't sealed up because in the back, I had that trough ran with the water, so it could.
Would've never passed inspection.
Who inspects that?
They inspected it here about a month ago or so.
Who's that?
We just got so much money we need to spend.
State Health Services.
Oh, okay.
Zoological Division.
Do they pay us monthly or how often do they pay us?
Reimbursed.
Okay. And Paul's gets their money from donations?
Yes.
So what if they don't get enough donations?
They're sitting on very large amount now.
It's gonna take, I don't know exactly what the balance is.
And we wouldn't do any of the projects if they cannot find their money.
But I know that they probably have over a quarter of a million dollars. And they keep getting more donation, and they're getting more donations now.
They own the building?
Pardon me?
They own the building, right?
They own the building.
So why would they not pay for the generator and the ventilation?
Because we run it.
Because we run it and there's prob, there's a very good chance that we will end up owning this building.
I'm sure there's a real good chance they'll own it, they'll own it.
They're gonna donate.
Pay our money and everything.
They're gonna give donated to the city.
Yeah, right, boondock.
We're paying for it anyways. So if you're looking at this quote, they got three quotes for this, this ventilation thing. They got CNS refrigeration twenty-eight thousand, Lowe's seventy-five hundred and Home Depot sixty-eight hundred.
Oh, the generator? Is that not generator?
Yeah, the twenty-eight thousand is the generator.
So what's the quote one, two, three?
Lowe's is the things, isn't it?
I think they're just all putting it together.
Well, it says that the CNS refrigeration is all inclusive. It will be a propane unit, Lowe's and Home Depot are not and may not be propane. So what does that mean?
Well, number one is the ventilators, okay.
I'm looking at the generator.
The thing that I see there is that they're different wattages. We're gonna have, we're gonna have Kelly Bulkin come out there and tell us exactly what we're going to need to be able to carry the ventilation for the animal shelter. And again, these were just preliminary budget figures. Start looking at this. I would say these others are more home type of generators.
This one's the recirculation. When I gave her the paperwork to make her request to go, a week, uh, to go get bids, so that's what we came up with this morning. When I gave her the paperwork to make her request to write it, to, to, uh, to go get bids, so that's what we came up with this morning, not too bad.
We'll get new bids. A lot of time we have in here to talk. We'll have Chad do it.
On the fencing, is that just us building it internally? Or is that how they built that? Just getting surprised?
I believe that is actually just us building it.
Yeah.
That's just materials.
Where's our final date? Does that, these need to be approved by, is it two meetings out? Forget the, the calendar schedule, remind me.
It's still August.
It's August, we got, we got a good bit of time for them to shore up their bids and get their costing and, and get it down, which is really absolutely necessary too.
But this is what we want y'all to do with these quotes, is to look at them.
We just want you to know where this is the projects we're looking at.
Just starting point here. Put your wish down and some things if we gotta have it, you gotta have it, but let's get it shored up and make sure it's matching funds. Just like Tommy's putting it up.
And, you know, another thing I wanna point out is that this interlocal agreement that we have with county on the animal shelter, the budget that was prepared was basically a, uh, an estimate because we had no idea what the operational costs were gonna be. And all, all three parties agreed that this is where we're gonna go for the first year. And then, you know, once we had a year behind us, then we could actually get more accurate, um, more accurate amounts where we have a better idea what the budget's gonna actually be. And so far, we've only been into this budget for three months now. So, and we've just started bringing on another, some personnel, so we're just now kinda starting to get a feel of what our monthly expenditures are, are looking like. And they have actually, Paul's has actually done a lot of capital improvements, um, uh, that we did not pay for. Even, even since we've been operating the shelter. So they have kicked in, they've kicked, they've actually kicked in, they've kicked in quite a bit more than the county, so.
We'll be looking at this in more detail though, next, next couple of meetings here. So it's not something we're obviously acting on, this is just first round.
Well, didn't originally, the Pauls be saying that they had many people wanting to donate fifty, sixty, seventy thousand?
Yes.
Did that come to fruition? Did that, did that come about?
Yeah.
They bought the building?
They bought the building and they said, then they went through kind of a, a funding drop-off before the building was open because they had the building for a year.
Of course.
And then, but they started to see, according to speaking with, uh, John Richmond, they're starting to see larger checks come again. And they're actively engaged, we're not having to do any of the fundraising, that's theirs. And they have been actively engaged in doing that. But maybe, maybe it'd be great for them to come to a meeting and kinda give a follow-up.
We need, well, I just, I.
If they could rock the money for the, these things and.
Yeah. And, and give an accounting for where they're at as far as the contribution.
I just, we're, like, somebody mentioned, that's a big shelter. And we're a small town. And we got a lot of stuff we gotta pay for. And, and this thing can get heated really super duper quick. But I know it's like a lot of different things that, that, once you own it, you own it and then you can't ever get rid of it. And so that's just my concern. We got a lot of things we gotta pay for and I don't wanna keep on about it, that's just, that's my, I mean, we've got pets. I, I get it. I'm not anti-pet, but we've got water, we've got sewer, we've got so much stuff we've gotta be taking care of. It's, it's, you know, it, it.
Let me say this, the, apart from the capital costs, our budget for that animal shelter is no more than the budget that we had for this animal shelter.
Okay.
We're not putting another dime into it.
Until we end up owning it, that's my concern.
Well, and that's, that's down the road. That's, that's what, that's, that could be way down the road. And, um, so.
It continues as it is though, that was still partnering with the county.
Right. And the county's in, is in this, you know, if Paul's ever drops out, it's gonna have to be a fifty-fifty thing with the county.
Well, if Paul's drops out, I mean, we can't even get the county, well, I'm, I'm just opening up every can of worm, my can tonight. But, I mean, it's like.
They're legitimate worms.
Yeah, but I mean, it's like, we're, we're, we can't, we're still trying to figure out the fire department, okay? Do we wanna take care of twenty dogs or have a fire department? Do we wanna, I mean, that's how I'm looking at this.
I understand.
Is that, you know, we're not Dallas, we're.
I understand.
Mount Vernon and we're, you know, we're borrowing money everywhere we can to get the things done we need to get done. And so that's just, I'm, I'm.
No, you're good. Good points.
Let's move on, birthday boy for you.
Well.
You didn't wear your crown, so you can't talk, hush, hush.
The only way you can dismiss this is to put your crown on.
He has the husher, the shusher.
I have one more point of, uh, interest for y'all. Uh, it, as it relates to infrastructure. Um, I've had a series of calls with engineers and Tech Dot regarding the, um, the ramps, the one forty-six and one forty-seven. And, um, the engineers have actually talked to Tech Dot and Tech Dot is, um, agreeable to start looking at what it would actually cost uh, to go ahead and move those ramps back and reconfigure the ramps. And, um, but they did indicate to the engineers, and we just had a call this morning on that, that when they did that, it would go to one way.
Everybody else was doing it.
Frontage road from thirty-seven, you know.
It's one mile difference. I would be okay with that. I don't know how everybody else feels, but it's like.
Yeah. But we should have a proposal on what it'll, what it'll cost, the total cost of the engineers estimate, um, probably within the next three or four months.
But they pay for all of that, right?
They pay, it, it depends on when you want it done. If we pay a portion of it, like if we paid for the engineering, that thing would be shovel-ready and Tech Star could start bidding on it, move it higher on the prior worklist.
So, what are we looking, sixty thousand dollars in engineering?
I have no idea. It's probably gonna be more than that. But the whole project, when Brad and I were there, they were talking just.
It could be two to four million.
Yeah.
For two ramps.
Well, absolutely it is, but the problem, I mean, you should do something because you have to like, do this and after you broke your neck, that's kinda hard to do.
Well, somebody's gonna get killed.
It's a dangerous spot, but it also opens up a lot more property for economic development.
Yeah.
Sure does.
Because it'll move the ramp on the, uh, westbound side, almost pass it back, almost to Lowe's and it would open up all that property. So it's, it's.
Oh, so you mean you would be one way all the way to Lowe's and then one way all the way back?
Mm-hmm. Could be.
It's not uncommon for businesses to chip in.
Possibly.
You'd, you'd still have, you'd, no, wait a minute, so the first exit is the one where Dairy Queen is. The next exit is, is Love's and Duke's. And then the next exit, so I mean, you could, you could, you could go around like between these places, right?
It would be also. Yeah.
You don't have to drive from, you know, Dairy Queen all the way down to Lowe's to get on the one way to come back.
No, I mean, there's still be.
Okay, 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 no, no, okay.
And, and there's, there's that under ramp back behind Dairy Queen.
Yeah, and.
Before the rest area.
And the, we'd have new signals there at the spur on both sides.
We get another traffic light?
Another traffic light.
Woo, we may be Dallas before too long.
Yeah. And.
Too many already.
And, um. The plan here is actually to, uh, talk to some of the lithium companies about they're increasing the truck traffic, also possibly talk to Duke's because it's gonna help them.
Well, that brings up a point. Where, where are we at on, we've been talking about the, you know, we're getting all the ordinances ready and things and the impact fees and stuff. Where are we at on those that we're able to do some of that, where, where we get some help paying for some of this stuff, their impact fees?
On the impact fees? The legislature, your elected officials have just put significant restrictions on, um, what we can charge for impact fees.
Really?
So we're having to, we're gonna have to go back and look at that. That was one of the things that they addressed this last legislative session that the governor just signed into law yesterday. Um, additionally, there are also, uh, some changes that they did with regard to zoning. And, uh, actually also providing, um, uh, also, um, petitioning for de-annexation. If a city can't get water and sew, sewer to an annexed area, um, within six month period of time, they can petition for de-annexation.
So what's the zoning changes after we've done all this work?
The zoning changes will be able to adopt with some slight changes in our current zoning ordinance, but a lot of them have to do with manufactured housing. You have to have, actually, all cities are required to have a area within the city limits that is for man, manufactured housing. They also have one, um, uh, there is one they call the mother-in-law house. Basically allowing, um, a, another, more than one pro, one building being on property. And, uh, they have really micromanaged a lot of the city things. They are also doing, um, there's a big push, it didn't pass, but there was a big push on putting an expenditure cap on cities, meaning that your, you, your budget could only increase by, uh, inflation and, um, um, and, um, the, uh, your population, so.
What's, what's behind all of this in your mind? I mean, we've, we've, I've opened every other can of worm tonight, so go ahead. What do you think's driving it?
State control, well, politically it is, it was spurred on, uh, by pure politics. You have larger cities in Texas that are democratically controlled and you have a very conservative element that's leading the Texas legislature. And they wanna punish Houston, they wanna punish Dallas, they wanna punish San Antonio, but in doing so, um, because these larger cities have said, you know, we, we want our zoning to look like this and you can't do that here, or we have tree ordinance, we don't want you to do that here, and, you know, all those types of things. We, we want you, we, we need these impact fees to be able to grow. So the legislatures just said, no, we're gonna take control over that. And.
We think that they would, I mean, I guess it's government.
They're not that bright, Mark.
But they could put, you know, cities over X amount population because it hurts us.
And some of them they do, but most of them they don't. I mean, most of them they don't. You know, one of, another one that they passed, it doesn't, it doesn't, uh, impact, um, existing contracts. But effective September first, um, any contracted employee, city manager or whoever, um, their severance cannot be more than twenty weeks. Well, this sounds great, you know, except when you have a young guy that moves from El Paso, becomes city manager in Marshall, Texas, half a state, you know, an entire state away, and he gets a crazy council the second year that he's there and he's moved his family over there. Well, Marshall just has history, okay? And, um, and he gets fired after he's moved his family and he only has that period of time to do, I mean, it, it, and I use that as an example. That's how they're micromanaging. They're micromanaging and our state legislature and state senator are leading the charge on that.
Well, it sounds like welcome to the corporate world because that's the way it's been for a long time.
We're gonna change the way these post-arrangements, five business days before the meeting.
Well, I mean, what else are you doing?
So, you know, that's.
Thank you for the, thank you.
Yeah, that's, it's kinda crazy.
Well, that's all for tonight, unless we have any other discussion around those.
It was a long, short meeting.
It was a long, short, not bad at all.
Hope you take the cake eating your ass pretty short.
No, I appreciate y'all being here. But, uh, we did, we did need to have a meeting and happy birthday, Harold, glad, glad to have you, sir.
Thank you, Kathy, thank you.
Have a little fun there with you. Need a motion to adjourn?
Let Harold do it.
I didn't, uh, I didn't see a gift, so.
Harold, we have a motion to adjourn.
We got, we got a couple, we've got a couple of gifts from the animal shelter that we're gonna give you.
First of all, I gotta say, I didn't know they had to keep them cool. My dogs never felt air-conditioned. I dismiss whatever you say.
No, you need a motion to dismiss.
I make a motion.
Second, very second.
Nope, nope.
All in favor?
I make a motion, we dismiss.
Did somebody get a picture with the crown? I need that, please.
Oh, we definitely need it.
I will share with all of you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Get a second, get a first, come on.
Second.
All right, here we go. Was it legal?
Happy birthday.
Thank y'all, thank you, yeah.
I have a question for you.